All right, good morning, everybody. Welcome. Sorry we're running a little bit late this morning, but at this time, we am going to call the order, the 10:00 AM regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners for October 17th. And at this time, Ms. Sharon Zadra, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Zadra. Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call?
Of course. Bob Lucy Chair.
Here.
Marsha Burke Bigler Vice Chair.
Here.
Kitty Jung is absent. Von Hartung.
Here.
Jeanne Herman. County Manager John Flotter.
Present.
Deputy District Attorney David Watzvial.
Here.
And I'm Jan Galassini, Chief Deputy Clerk, sir, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Manager, we're on to public comment.
Item three is public comment. Comment heard under this item is limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to items both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person, and comments should be made to the commission as a whole.
Great. All right, I will call public comment at this time. First, I have Ms. Sharon Zadra, followed by Ms. Darlene Hesse. Good morning, Ms. Zadra.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for allowing me to lead the salute to our flag.
I pledge.
It's good to be with you all this morning. I cannot be here later on your agenda to speak to the item that I'm here now to talk about, and that is, earlier this month and the end of September, Turkey Meadows Healthy Communities hosted a RAM, a Remote Area Medical Event, that provided free medical care to anybody, no questions asked. And Commissioner Herman was very gracious, it is on your agenda today, to approve her intent to use her discretionary funds that enabled us to be able to provide this free service. It enabled us to provide 430 individuals with free medical care that equated to $137,022 as well. It was amazing to watch. We worked with the National Remote Area Medical Corps that brings in a huge semi-truck full of medical equipment and supplies. We had to provide the doctors, although they brought a lot of them with them. And we watched people arrive here at the county complex, and then we shuttled them over to the Boys and Girls Club who donated their venue for us to be able to put in a medical clinic to provide all of the services. It was absolutely amazing. People truly did arrive at midnight and even earlier, although the clinic doors did not open until 6:00 AM. We were advised by the National Corps that people would camp out, and literally, they did. They came with, not many of them with sleeping bags because they flat didn't have them, but they did have slippers and pajamas and blankets, and they huddled together in the parking lot right over here, waiting to be shuttled over to get their services, which included everything from vision and dental. So even people who might have insurance, most policies, many policies, as we all know, do not include vision and dental, as well as general practitioner services, women's health services, all kinds of reviews and the analyses. We found, you know, there's all, obviously, the HIPAA law, I don't know who any of the patients were, that's part of the rule, you don't ask any questions, but I did hear that we actually picked up some people who didn't even know that they were diabetic. There was one woman in particular that just, I will never forget, who ended up having to have six teeth removed. Six. So when I was trying to touch points with her through the rest of the day, there were other services that she needed and that her children needed and her husband needed. So if you can imagine her mouth full of gauze, and it wasn't white anymore after six extractions of her teeth, she was smiling. With her eyes, she was smiling. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zadra. Next, I have Ms. Darlene Hesse, followed by Ms. Kathleen Shoup.
Well, good morning, everyone. I'm here again to defend Wild Creek Golf Course. I feel as though, I love what Von Hartung said, you have a responsibility, a fiduciary responsibility, to the Washoe County citizens for this very expensive property. I believe in schools, but I do not believe that this is a place for this school, for this high school. The traffic will be just unbelievable, and the flood problem, this is a flood plain, it's always been a flood plain, and if you look in the original documents of Joken 40, you will see they refer to this as a flood plain. Now, this property is beautiful, and just, it's going to increase in value, too. And I'm a taxpayer from Washoe County, like so many other people. What's going to happen to, you know, what happens to all the money that we've put in? Like $30 million the taxpayers have put in, they've also got the water. I mean, this is just an unbelievable thing that could go on. I am so disappointed in our, you know, there's protection for open spaces and green areas. You don't want to just fill it full of crazy things that are going to cost probably a fortune. It's going to be an endless problem financially to Washoe County, all the expenses. Look at that golf course, there's all these hills, all that property has to be taken down. I mean, my goodness, it's just unbelievable what's happening. I'm here in defense of this, and this is just not a good thing that you're doing. I just pray that you people, you just, do you want to be known for taking this beautiful property down? This is just not a golf course, and you know, this is different, Sparks is different than Reno. This is country, and it's not so expensive for people to play golf. When you take that away, people are going to lose so much. It's beautiful up there. It is just a beautiful, it should be, if it's taken away, then it should be put in, made a park. It's just too gorgeous of an area for you guys to be taking. I mean, I'm here with, I have my heart and soul in this to save this property. I'm just really sad about this, and I'm not, not just for me, for the people in the future. I just, I'm 78 years old, but I'll tell you, I feel in my heart that this is the most worthwhile property to save, and I hope you people would go by and take a look at what beauty that you're going to take down. It's a shame. And I'd like to see some good things come out of this instead of bad. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Kathleen Shoup, followed by Mr. Sam Denae.
Hello, this is, I'm Kathleen Shoup, and I'm also here to speak on behalf of Wild Creek Golf Course. The Washoe County and the RSCBA are considering transference of property to the Washoe County School District in order for them to build a high school there on that property, and we all believe that we need high schools. That's not a problem at all, but we just don't believe that that is a good, appropriate place to build the high school. If you take the 212 acres that is there on that property and then remove what they're saying now, anywhere from 60 to 80 acres is what they're going to need for the high school, then that's going to leave you about 132 acres to deal with, and it's just a piece, a piece of land, and there's no telling what's going to happen with that, what you decide to do, what you can afford to do, or what we can as a county afford to do. There's the water rights problem. As far as I know, the water rights haven't even been determined yet as to who actually owns the water rights. I know that there's that affluent bond that needs to be paid off, and there's also groundwater, though. There's the affluent water and there's the groundwater, so I have been told several times that there is groundwater attached to that property. However, it seems that nobody can figure out who belongs, who it belongs to. In the 1960s and '70s, we really worked hard to try to legalize marijuana. Hey, guess what? It's legal now. Yay, 50, 60 years later. In May of this year, it was announced to us that they are, they had decided that the Wild Creek Golf Course should become the location for a new high school. And here we are, just a few months later, it's, they're saying it's a done deal, but of course, it's not really a done deal until it's signed off. And I want you to not sign it off. I want this to not be a hasty decision that is just going to take a few months, somebody say, "I want that property," and, okay, you can have it. You know, that's just wrong. It's just wrong. Really look into it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Sam Denae, followed by Ms. Tammy Holtstill.
Sam Denae, Denae, the heart and soul and the body and mind of Reno government, continues to do my heart good to see that Sheriff Allen thinks, thinks, finds me important enough to have a specific deputy sheriff assigned to guard me, protect me against who knows what may be going on out there with the Reno Media Mouse wacko freaks and all their crazy, nice smiley face. And now Chief Soto over in Reno is doing the same thing for me. As a matter of fact, he comes himself to some of the meetings to protect me against the nefarious things going out on, out there. I'm an Air Force Academy graduate, I spent many years flying fighters and bombers, defending our nation. I am responsible for 92% of the good things about Reno. I ask anybody in the room every time, if you want to challenge it, come up here. Say, "Sam, it's only 91%," or actually, it's 94%. Anyway, nice smiley face over there. Right now, I want to talk about, I haven't said much about this Wild Creek affair. I call it the Jackhammer affair, the Jackhammer School Affair, because that's what it's going to mean for the people up there for four or five years, jackhammering around their neighborhood, messing up the lives of hundreds and hundreds of people, and then after that, they're going to have school buses and all the other things, and I'm not against children in schools, I'm in favor of them, but this whole thing is a boondoggle, a scheme, it's a, and I am somewhat embarrassed because I was a driving force that, that got this crazy school tax approved, and I'm very questionable about whether or not that was an honest vote, because I did take a survey of my own, and I never talked to one person who said they voted for that school, that infinite school tax. At any rate, this whole thing, there's so much vacant land and property around this community, it is just crazy and ludicrous, and it just conjures up all schemes of hanky pank and smokey rooms and bathrooms and bars and who knows what, where people are coming up with these crazy schemes. It is a scheme. They're going to spend $120 million to build a $40 million school. Think about it. Where the Hug High School is right now is, can be handled, if not, there's many places it could go besides, up to Wild Creek, a beautiful golf course. The whole thing just reeks, reeks of hanky pank between the developers, between the companies who are going to be making money off of putting in all the infrastructure of this school, millions and millions of dollars, it is just a wacko scheme. And I know, I know that Edon is behind this, and I know that the Reno Gazette, Media Mouse wacko freaks are behind it.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you over there. Nice smiley face, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Denae. Next, I have Ms. Tammy Holtstill, followed by Ms. Kathy Brandhorse.
Mr. Chair, Tammy has a paper to hand out for the record.
Madam Clerk.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tammy Holtstill, Lemon Valley Swan Lake Recovery Committee, and still here. Yesterday, we had a councilperson from the city of Reno come out to visit with us and take a tour. It was very interesting, there were a lot of questions asked, and one of the most interesting was Washoe County, why is Washoe County not putting a building moratorium on the issues until all the issues and all the surveys and all the studies are completed? I said that was a good question. I asked that myself of you, the city of Reno, and Washoe County, and then I proceeded to ask, how do we follow through on that? I didn't get an answer. There needs to be a moratorium until all the building's done and all the surveys and the aquifers are surveyed so we know where they're at, and that the water is under control, not by the HESCO barriers. Let's see what else. To put it, but it was very nice to have someone who was interested in Lemon Valley to help and be interested in what is happening out there. This person does not have any association with that district, but yet she was interested in what the issues are. It'd be nice to see other people do the same. Let's see, in fact, I also did some other research. I found that through a Washington DC website, that 120 gallons per day for one bedroom is a minimum. Washoe County built, or Washoe County allowed apartments to be built on Lemon Drive to add to their sewer plant that puts in over a half million gallons of water per day into Swan Lake, and then Sted is putting in 2 million gallons per day into Swan Lake, and they have apartments on Military Road going in, they also have homes going in over there by Sky Vista. Don't you think that's going to just tip the teapot a little too full and spew it over? I do. It's time for Roger, it's time for you guys to stop being Roger Rabbit when the developers come around. It's time to start doing your fiduciary responsibility to all of the residents of Washoe County. There's a saying, you are not leaders, you are representatives, and it is time for you as a representative to serve the people of Washoe County, not for the developers. Uncontrolled growth and giving away the candy store does not help your financial woes. I still have not seen any power poles that I was told were going to be put in to support the pumps out in Lemon Valley. I also understand that FEMA has started to distribute the funds for the emergency that was brought up, and I would like to see that funding and where it is going. Thank you.
Next, I have Ms. Kathy Brandhorse.
My name is Kathy Brandhorse, and I am the United States President. I just wanted to let you know, I still live on C Street in Sparks, and the problem is still existing. All of you are on the property, you don't live on the property, you don't belong on the property, you have been evicted, you don't leave the property because you still refuse to. The problem is still existing of taking the people who walk through the alley, you put them invisible, and you drag them to your apartment. We can hear the screams, we can hear the cries, we can also hear people saying, "Please release me." How much money do you want to release me? You know, torture is another thing that you've been doing in your apartments, but you don't live in those apartments at all. And I just wanted to tell you, you know, the more you murder, it seems like the more you get away with. And the neighborhood is getting kind of tired of all these murders, being dragged from garbage cans with chopped heads, body parts are always found every time the waste management, the garbage truck comes by, he says, "Oh, Kathy, there's more bags full of body parts, there's more chopped heads." I think we found about at least 150 chopped heads today. Oh my. You know, we are really, really tired of all you people. I guess you don't have a place to live because most of you are on the property after midnight, and we are trying to get a little bit of sleep after midnight, but it's not possible because there, the people are screaming and hollering that they are not even safe to walk through the alley or on the streets of C Street and Stanford. And I do live near the Victorian, and that used to be a very good area. And also, the gasoline has been stolen from the gas pumps, again, from the gas station, and you refuse to pay for the gasoline because you don't have the money to pay for it. You want it for nothing, you want it for free. And you need, and then you don't stop there, you shoot down some of the customers because they overheard this problem that you can't afford to pay for the gasoline, and then you shoot down the attendant. Oh my god.
Thank you, Ms. Brandhorse. All right, seeing no further public comment at this time, we're going to bring it back to the board. Mr. Manager, we're on to item four.
Item four is our Commissioner and County Manager's announcements, reports, and updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas. I have one announcement, and that is, Mr. Chair, and for everyone who's watching, this Thursday, the 19th, so October 19th, at 10:19 is the Great Nevada Shakeout, that's a statewide earthquake drill. So at 10:19, we invite everyone to, at a minimum, think about what you would do during a major earthquake, but actually, we would ask if you have the opportunity to, to get underneath a desk, some sort of a table, and drop cover and hold.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. All right. Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to ask the county manager if we could have a presentation sooner rather than later on the status of dispatch and the study that was done. It's been a while since we've heard any responses on anything, and I, I think it's time that we really started moving forward on fixing dispatch. It's an issue that is going to require some time to resolve, and so if you could get a presentation for us, that would be terrific. Thank you.
Great. All right, you know, and I just wanted to, one thing I wanted to bring up was last, last week, last Thursday, we did have, here in the chambers, our Washoe Impact Awards. And once again, I want to commend all of the departments and the employees and staff that participated with us, and the commissioners that were here. You know, we changed from a state of the county to our Washoe Impact Awards because we feel that obviously our employees are the lifeblood of this, of this organization and what we do here, and it's your stories and it's your work, day in and day out, that make Washoe County what it is. And so I want to thank you, everybody who came and attended, the regional leaders that participated here with us and celebrated that night. We had, it was an amazing, an event, all the, most, most of the commissioners were here, we were able to highlight some amazing groups from our child, our CAC, which is the Child's Advocacy Center, Marshall County Child's Advocacy Center. We have the CERT team that was, was awarded, our emergency response teams. Everything we really saw was poignant, and we, it was well, well done, and I have to thank staff, and then, you know, mostly Nancy Lewinhagen and her staff, and the, and the teams that were, Washoe Leadership Team, thank you, that helped put that together, and it was, it turned out flawlessly, so thank you once again, I really enjoyed that, and it was very nice. So that was, if there's no further announcements, we will move on. Nope, okay.
I do, just, just short.
Chris Martin.
Supportive of Commissioner Burke Bigler.
Sure.
You know, sooner rather than later on dispatch, we've, we've got to get that resolved. So I'm completely in agreement. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no further, we are on to item number five. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair, item five is our, our regular new employee introduction, so introducing new employees. What will happen is our commissioners and myself will come down to welcome our employees, we'll ask them to line up, they will come down, introduce themselves, and be welcomed into the county.
My name is Sean Hubbard, I'm with Animal Services right now, and the caretaker there, and I'm enjoying it and loving every bit of it. Glad to be here.
Hi, my name is Casey Lefun, and I work for Child, Human Support Service Agency, and I'm a human support specialist there, so I do work with kids.
I'm the Asset Systems Coordinator in the Community Services Department, and I'm happy to be on board, I'm a Reno and Washoe County native. Aaron Smith for the record.
The floor is yours, sir. So now, we're on to item six, which is our certificates honoring the fellow Washington County employees that have completed essential and employee development courses. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair and members of the board, Washoe County encourages lifelong learning and the professional development of all of our employees administered by the Human Resources Department. Our Excellence in Public Service is a series of certificate programs designed to support employee development and performance. The completion of these courses over two years demonstrates the employees' commitment to continuous personal and professional improvement and Washoe County's journey of excellence, and today, we're very pleased to recognize that commitment. Our first certificate goes to Angelica Artega, Office Support Specialist for Human Services Agency, and Angelica has, has completed the Promote Yourself Mini Certificate Program. Next is Heather Belding, Office Assistant Two for the Human Services Agency. Heather has completed the Promote Yourself Mini Certificate Program. Congratulations to Heather.
Congratulations, there you go.
And next, Sophia Cardinal, Senior Accountant for the Community Services Department, has completed the Essentials of SAP for Financial Staff Certificate Program. Congratulations to Sophia. Lisa Lane, Payroll Personnel Clerk for the Sheriff's Office, has completed the Essentials of SAP for HR reps and Essentials of Support Staff Certificate Programs. Janine Rosa, Environmental Engineer Two for the Health District, has completed the Promote Yourself Mini Certificate Programs. Congratulations, Janine. Diane Wozniak, Social Services Supervisor for the Human Services Agency, has completed the Essentials of Management Development Certificate Program. Congratulations to Diane. Hey, good to see you. And Stephanie Zonchi, Administrative Secretary for the Sheriff's Office, has completed the Essentials of Management Development Certificate Program. Congratulations to Stephanie.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. You know, I want to thank everybody once again, you know, big round of applause to all of our employees that take advantage of this amazing opportunity that we put forth for your continued advancement and continued growth, and to your department heads, the Sheriff's Office, HR, CSD, library, and a number of you continually provide and promote your, or encourage your staff to take part in these programs, and they're just amazing, and we want to continue to do this, so it just brings a smile to my face every time we get to do these awards, so thank you. Big round of applause for everybody. So, Mr. Manager, we are on to our proclamations for the day, so we are on to 7A.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This, this is item seven, 7A through C, your proclamations, and I will have the pleasure of introducing the first Commissioner- of introducing the first Commissioner. Jung had requested this and unfortunately she was unable to be here today, so I am very happy to stand in her place. And this is a proclamation proclaiming Sunday, October 22nd, 2017, as the bicentenary of the birth of Baha'u'lla. And we have the certificate, we have a number of folks here today, if they would, if they could join me.
Yes, please, if you would join the manager at the podium.
And I will read the proclamation now as they join me, maybe on both sides?
Both sides.
Yeah, both sides, let's make it.
Good idea.
The Baha'i Faith has been present in Washoe County since the early 1900s and whereas a crying need of humanity is the achievement of unity, peace, and justice in our communities and whereas in the 19th century, Baha'u'lla, the founder of the Baha'i Faith, brought a message of human dignity, capacity, and oneness suited to the requirements of contemporary life. And October 22nd, 2017 marks the 200th anniversary of the birth of Baha'u'lla and whereas the Baha'i community of Washoe County has striven to apply this vision to the material and spiritual life of our county, collaborating with others to promote unity and to serve their fellow citizens and whereas the Baha'i Faith community in Washoe County and their families, friends, neighbors, and colleagues are commencing this bicentenary along with Baha'i in Nevada, across the United States, and around the world. And now therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim Sunday, October 22nd, 2017, as the bicentenary of the birth of Baha'u'lla in Washoe County and urge all to resolve on this day to promote in themselves and in their relations with others those qualities and attributes that will help bring about the recognition of the oneness of humanity, to embrace diversity and to work for unity in our local community, in our country, and in the world, dated the 17th day of October, 2017, and signed by Bob Lucy, Chair, Washoe County Commission.
Would someone like to speak?
Thank you so much. We are so honored to be here and we represent a small group of the Northern Nevada Baha'is and we're excited because this is a time, 200th anniversary of the birth of Baha'u'lla, the founder of the Baha'i Faith. And so we're excited about being here to share that vision of the oneness of humanity. We have a gift. My sister's going to pass out a couple invitations for you so that you can join us in celebrating this, if you can, on the 22nd. And also to say we're striving in our communities to work with our neighbors and our coworkers, our families and friends, just to learn to grow together spiritually and to be able to serve the community. So we have a gift because we believe it starts with a smile. Give me a smile with everything on it. I'll pass it on. Give me a song, a song that's worth singing. I promise I'll pass it, I'll pass it along. Well, the world needs a lift when it's tired and weary. Love adds life and that's the way it should be. Come on, everybody, put a little love in your life. Give me a smile with everything on it. I'll pass it on. Give me a song, a song that's worth singing. I promise I'll pass it, I'll pass it along. Well, the world needs a lift when it's tired and weary. Love adds life and that's the way it should be. Come on, everybody, put a little love in your life. Come on, everybody, put a little love in your life. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, here we go. And in three, two, one more. Here we go. Three, two. Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Chair, I'll go ahead and announce the next item and just for the audience, we'll take all of these and then the board will take a motion to take action on all of the proclamations. So our next proclamation is item seven B, proclaiming October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And Commissioner Burke Bigler is here with a number of other employees who are coming down.
And we would invite anyone who is a breast cancer survivor to please come up and join us. This is such an important month. Or a family member.
Yes.
Yes. This is such an important month and we're so excited to do this proclamation. We do this proclamation every year and it's something very near and dear to all of our hearts. So let me read the proclamation for us. Whereas one in eight women in the United States will be diagnosed with breast cancer in their lifetime and whereas the leading risk factor for breast cancer is simply being a woman and most breast cancer, about 85% occurs in women who have no family history of breast cancer and whereas breast cancer is the most commonly diagnosed cancer in women as well as the second leading cause of death among women. And whereas each year is estimated that more than 252,710 women in the United States will be diagnosed with breast cancer and more than 40,500 will die. And whereas organizations such as Susan G. Komen Northern Nevada and Moms on the Run have made it possible for women to receive screening, diagnosis, treatment, and financial support. And whereas the Washoe County recognizes and supports employees and their families who are currently battling breast cancer, those who have survived the battle and especially remembers our employees who have lost the battle to breast cancer. Now therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, dated this date, 17th of October, and signed by our Chair, Bob Lucy. Yesterday, what, no, Monday, Sunday, this is Tuesday, isn't it? I'm getting my day straight. Sunday was the Race for the Cure, Susan G. Komen Race for the Cure, which was well-attended.
Susan G. Komen's here.
And I forgot to wear my pink today, so thanks to my wonderful staff here, they brought me a pink ribbon to wear. So thank you all for being here. Thank you very much and I would open the mic to anyone who would like to speak.
I'm Heather Goulding from Susan G. Komen of Nevada and I want to thank the employees of Washoe County have been incredibly generous with their time and their energy in fundraising. Year after year, your employees are very active in fundraising and very supportive of their sisters and brothers in the community that are fighting breast cancer. So thank you all. So you've taken your own journey and turned that into helping others and we can't thank you enough for the work that you do.
Thank you.
Elaine Anagnastu, I work with Human Resources. You walk in the door and my smiling face is the first one you'll see. I am a nine-year survivor and this is my eighth year doing the bake sale for Susan G. Komen. Every penny that comes in goes directly to the Susan G. Komen Foundation and it's going on right now. We have wonderful support from the Pepper Mill, so if you want a Pepper Mill dessert, come on upstairs.
Anyone else?
I will.
Okay.
As you all know, Marilyn Kramer, Manager's Office, three-year survivor now and I just, every year that we have done this, it touches my heart. And I want to say thank you to Washoe County, thank you to the Commission, thank you to my employer. You guys have been wonderful, not only to me, but I am sure to a lot of other, others of us who have gone through this journey or are going through this journey with your care and compassion and the fact that you're just there to be, to help us along through this journey. So I have to say thank you to all of you for doing what you do and enabling us to recover and become survivors.
Thank you.
Beautiful.
Ladies, let's go have a picture.
Fabulous.
All right. All right. All right. Here we go. Three, two. One more. Three, two. And I got one more camera. All right. Okay, here we go. And three, two. One more. And three, two. All right. Congratulations.
All right. Mr. Manager, if you'll take us into the next proclamation.
Next, our next proclamation is item seven C on the agenda. This is proclaiming the week of October 15 through 21, 2017, as National Friends of Libraries Week. And our Chair, Lucy, is here and we have, I believe, some
We do.
Staff in the library as well as Friends of the Library that are here.
We'd like to welcome them down. Have them down. Andrew, come on. Come on down. It's always, it's always wonderful to be joined down here with the Friends, members of the Friends of the Library and also our wonderful library staff that are here with us today. So come on and get in. So the library is, and I say it so frequently, is such a, is more than just a information center or a home for books. It's a, it's a community center that's really truthfully at the heart of all of our residential communities and it allows for so much more, a meeting place, a safe place, an entire community to get together, share ideas, grow for our children. It is just so much. And the Friends of Washoe County Library do so much in their efforts to continue to support libraries here in Washoe County through book sales and a number of different efforts. We can't thank them enough for being a wonderful partner with Washoe County. And so it brings me great pleasure today to read this proclamation. Whereas founded in 1980, the Friends of Washoe County Library supports the mission, vision, and values of the Washoe County Library System and is dedicated to advocating, fundraising, and providing support for the Washoe County Library System. And whereas in 2016, Friends of Washoe County Library helped raise over $139,000 to, that helped enhance and strengthen the library by providing resources and additional programming, much-needed equipment, support for children's summer reading, and special events throughout the year. And whereas the work of the Friends of Washoe County Library, a member-supported 501(c)(3) with over 700 members, highlights an ongoing basis, the fact that our library system is the cornerstone of our, of the community and provides the opportunities for all to engage and enjoy of lifelong learning and to connect with thoughts and ideas from others ages past to the present. And whereas the Friends understand the critical importance of a well-funded library and advocate to ensure the Washoe County Library System gets the resources needed to provide a wide variety of services to all ages, including access to print and electronic materials along with the expert assistance in research, readers advisory, and child, and children's services. And whereas the Friends gift their time and commitment to the library sets, to the library sets, an example for all in how volunteerism leads to positive civic engagements and the betterment of our community. And now therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the week of October 15 through the 21st, 2017, as National Friends of Library Week, dated the 17th day of October, signed by myself, Bob Lucy, Chair, Washoe County Commission. Thank you so much for all that you do. Any, would you like some comments?
Yeah, just very briefly. My name is Keith Judson. I'm the Secretary Treasurer of the Friends. I'd like to thank you for this proclamation. As you probably know, we're an all-volunteer organization and for us, it's a labor of love. We love the books, we love the library. I'd like to thank Library Director Scott for his strong support for our organization. And our final numbers aren't in yet, but it looks like again this year, we will be donating something in excess of $100,000 to the library. Thank you.
All right, let's grab a picture. Come on down. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you for all your good work. We're giving you a kiss and then you're like up there. Here we go. Up here, three, two. One more. Three, two. Good. Thank you, guys.
All right. Yes, sir. No. Yeah. So at this time, I'm looking for a motion to accept, and is there, is there any public comments signed in? No public, seeing no public comment, I don't have any on my
I'll move, I'll make a motion to accept items seven A, B, and C.
Second.
I have a motion from Madam Vice Chair, seconded by Commissioner Herman. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Madam Vice Chair, would you like to read us our donations, please?
I would love to do that. Thank you very much. So today we are accepting a donation in the amount of $500 from the Hot August Nights Inc. to the Washoe County Sheriff's Office for the Citizen Core Program, CCP as it's referred to, including funds to be used for food purchases and if approved, authorize the Comptroller's Office to make the appropriate budget amendments.
And whereas, the Friends understand the critical importance of a well-funded library and advocate to ensure the Washoe County Library System gets the resources needed to provide a wide variety of services to all ages, including access to print and electronic materials, along with the expert assistance in research, readers advisory, and child, and children's services. And whereas, the Friends gift their time and commitment to the library sets, to the library sets, an example for all in how volunteerism leads to positive civic engagements and the betterment of our community. And now, therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the week of October 15 through the 21st, 2017, as National Friends of Library Week, dated the 17th day of October, signed by myself, Bob Lucy, Chair, Washoe County Commission.
Thank you so much for all that you do.
Thank you.
Any, would you like some comments?
Yeah, just very briefly. My name is Keith Judson. I'm the Secretary Treasurer of the Friends. I'd like to thank you for this proclamation. As you probably know, we're an all-volunteer organization, and for us, it's a labor of love. We, we love the books. We love the library. I'd like to thank Library Director Scott for his strong support for our organization. And our final numbers aren't in yet, but it looks like, again this year, we will be donating something in excess of $100,000 to the library. Thank you.
All right, let's grab a picture. Come on up.
Thank you.
Up here. Three, two. One more. Three, two.
Awesome.
Thank you, guys.
All right.
Yes, sir.
No. Yeah. So at this time, I'm looking for a motion to accept. And is there, is there any public comments signed in? No public, seeing no public comment. I don't have any on my.
I'll move, I'll make a motion to accept items 7A, B, and C.
Second.
I have a motion from Madam Vice Chair, seconded by Commissioner Herman. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Madam Vice Chair, would you like to read us our donations, please?
I would love to do that. Thank you very much. So, today we are accepting a donation in the amount of $500 from the Hot August Nights Inc. to the Washoe County Sheriff's Office for the Citizens, Citizen Core Program, CCP, as it's referred to, including funds to be used for food purchases and, if approved, authorize the Comptroller's Office to make the appropriate budget amendments. And I move that we approve this.
All right. I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second by Commissioner Hartung. I do have public comment signed in, Ms. Manager.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to make everyone aware, the Citizen Core Program, that's the overarching program of our Citizen Response Team that won the Manager's Choice Award this last week.
That's right.
Just wanted to make note of that.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. We do have public comment signed in, Ms. Kathy Brandhorse.
My name is Kathy Brandhorse, and I'm also the United States President. Excuse me. The donation of $500 from Hot August Nights to the Washoe County Sheriff's Office. I wanted to let you know that the citizens really appreciate what the sheriffs do, you know, downtown, because we have never had the protection or the self-confidence with a large crowd. Because most of the time when we have a large crowd, they do come in with their machine guns and shoot us all down. And including the funds to be used for food purchases, well, the food was, I didn't see very many people eating food because I thought it was a little bit too high. But a lot of people do have the money, you know, to purchase the food themselves. So I don't know, you know, what the budget would be for the food purchases. And also, the Comptroller's Office is the budget amendments for the sheriff, it says. But I just wanted to let you know, we do have the budget for people who were shot down during the Hot August Nights. And we do have people stealing motorcycles. And we do have people stealing automobiles out of the Hot August Nights, too. I don't know if they have been returned to the rightful owners or not, but this was a big issue, too, for stealing. Also, the clothes that were hanging up, they have been complaining that some of the clothes were stolen, too, while they were selling. And also, I just wanted to mention, you know, on Hot August Nights, I hope it's going to be a lot safer for everybody who attends, because we do have a lot of people who like to come to the Hot August Nights to Reno, Nevada. And also, including the funds, you know, we have not had much entertainment, but we do have the stages still on Hot August Nights for music and the bands. But they don't feel safe either when somebody has to say, you know, it's only pantomime only. So if we could change, you know, some of that situation with the bands, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed. Hope, call for the vote. Please place your vote. Thank you for doing it. Please affirm, please affirm your vote. All right. We are on to our consent agenda. Madam Vice Chair, if you would please, as, as customary, we've done before for Southern Commissioners.
I would love to do that. I want to acknowledge a district special fund disbursement in the amount of $9,900 for fiscal year 27, 2018. And District 5 Commissioner Jean Herman, and we want to thank you very much, recommends a $4,900 grant to Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District for the purchase of a portable fire pump to support fire suppression efforts in Verdi, and also a $5,000 grant to the renowned Health Foundation to help support Truckee Meadows Healthy Communities and host the Remote Area RAM Clinic that was held in September 2017. And we heard from Ms. Zadra, City Councilwoman, retired Ms. Zadra, was here talking about what an impact that RAM Clinic had. And so a great thanks to Commissioner Herman for handling this and putting her district funds into it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. And that is all on our consent agenda for this time. So I do have public comment signed in, Ms. Kathy Brandhorse.
Again, my name is Kathy Brandhorse, and I'm also the United States President. I just wanted to let you know, the Truckee Meadows Healthy Communities host the Remote Area Medical. There has been problems, you know, with the medical problems because most of the bodies have been filled with bullets. The bullet holes is what's causing the health towards a lot of people. I've seen them crippled. I've seen them, you know, not even be able to walk because of the bullets. Also, their chests, they are having a hard time breathing. Why? Because there's not enough Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District. You, you know, we have had lots of fires up in those hills, and they are close to me because I live in the Sparks area, right off of Victorian. And I just wanted to tell you that those fires are still going on. This morning, I couldn't even see what was going on because of fires. The smoke was covering up the fire, and I could not see what was going on in those hills. And it has been blackened even more. The $9,900 for disbursement, now, I don't know what you're actually, what's going to district special fund disbursement. I don't know what you're trying to say here, but that's not very much money for people who are lawsuits against you, you know, because you set up the fire. You already have the grass on fire. We know that, that grass should be very, it's not dry. And it has been set on fires, what I'm trying to say.
Ms. Brandhorse, this item is about donations.
Yes.
To the fire department, not about fires.
Well, I, I just wanted to let you know, you have it here, $9,900. I don't know what you use it for.
They're donations to, to the fire department.
Yes. Okay. But the fire is still going on, and I didn't see no fire truck. I didn't see nobody fighting the fire. I didn't see none of that going on when I was standing there, and the smoke was covering up the area. Let's see, the $4,900 is a grant to the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District?
Thank you, Ms. Brandhorse.
I'd like to know why.
Thank you. All right. At this time, I'm looking for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion, and a second from Commissioner Herman. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Please place your votes. Or nope. Nothing. There we go. Please place your votes.
It's coming.
You got nothing?
Have faith.
Commissioner Hartung is having some technical difficulty.
Aye.
We do have a unanimous vote in the affirmative. Please, affirmative votes up on the screen. Great. All right. We are on to, we entered our consent agenda. We are on to item 10. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair, item 10 is a bit of a bittersweet item, and the timing of this, typically, this is our agenda, our, our meeting for proclamations and recognition of employees, but timing of this particular item was necessary to bring this to you today. And so I will read the item, and then Christine Valetich, Assistant County Manager, will be here to say a few things. This is the acceptance of the resignation due to retirement of Luanne Cutler, Registrar of Voters, effective January 5, 2018, and to accept the county manager's recommendation and appoint Assistant Voter Registrar Deanna Spicula to the position of Registrar of Voters effective November 27, 2017.
All right. Ms. Valetich.
Thank you.
Assistant County Manager.
For the record, Christine Valetich, Assistant County Manager. Under Nevada Revised Regulations 244.164, each county having a population of 100,000 or more, the board may appoint an individual to the position of Registrar of Voters to assume all of the powers and duties with respect to elections. The position of Registrar of Voters is very highly specialized and requires technical knowledge and previous election experience, ideally specific to Washoe County, its voting systems and processes. The county manager is recommending the direct appointment option for the following reasons, that being one of them. Ms. Cutler was appointed to the position of Registrar in 2013 based on her technical and hands-on experience to ensure continuity in the operating of the office and conduction of election processes with integrity, honesty, and openness. Luanne Cutler will be retiring January 5, as county manager has also mentioned, after serving for 28 years with the county in that office. In her tenure, she's fulfilled this vision with many accomplishments, and she couldn't be here today, but obviously we'll be honoring her at a later date in January. But the board is very familiar, I'm sure, with one of her biggest accomplishments, which occurred earlier this year, where she worked extensively with the 2017 Nevada Legislature with the goal of securing $1.7 million for the replacement of our voting equipment and systems. The board approved that purchase in August, and the total cost, $4.2 million system. Implementation is scheduled to begin early next month, and I know they're already doing preliminary work on that. In the interest of furthering continuity and stability in the operations of the office and in making the transition for staff and voters alike a seamless event, Luanne Cutler is recommending that the board appoint Deanna Spicula, the current Assistant Registrar of Voters, as her successor. Ms. Cutler has worked to ensure a succession plan for her position and is certain that Deanna is ready to fill the role of Registrar upon her retirement. Ms. Spicula is here today. She has the experience, education, knowledge, work ethic, and integrity required for the position. Having worked in the office of the Registrar of Voters since 2011, she has successfully learned nearly every aspect of voter registration and elections. Early on, she was tasked with leading the redistricting process. That's a process that occurs every 10 years. Deanna has also led the way to efficiencies and workflow improvements within the department on many projects, from address corrections to the new absentee voter equipment installation last year. She was responsible for most of the amendments and the financial impact statements that were submitted to the 2017 legislative session, and has assisted with budget review and has a good understanding of the department's financial status. Deanna is also known for providing exemplary customer service and for her communication skills. It is for all of these reasons that the county manager is in agreement with Ms. Cutler and that we are recommending that the Board of County Commissioners appoint Deanna Spicula as the next Washoe County Registrar of Voters. What we're asking for is for that to be effective November 27, so that we can do a six-week overfill of the position. The financial impact of that is $4,182, which the department's budget can absorb. So there, it should not be a huge impact to the budget.
Great. Thank you, Assistant County Manager. Any further discussion from the commissioners? Mr. Chairman? Yes. Commissioner Hartung.
Ms. Spicula, I can think of no one who can readily step into the job with zero training, zero hours put forth and do it as seamlessly as you can. And I'm thrilled that you've agreed to do it. You've, you've done a great job representing Washoe County during quite a number of elections. Your on-camera presence is flawless. Welcome. Welcome to the position. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Absolutely, I'm thrilled to know that we're going to have this continuity of a great representative who already knows our county and knows, has worked extensively with different campaigns. So thank you very much for agreeing to, to stay with us and to take this position. And good luck.
You know, and I would like to share the sentiments, the same sentiments of my other commissioners. Ms. Spicula, you have been a tremendous asset to not only the registrars of office, but also to Washoe County as a whole. We'd love that the commitment is going to continue in the office that would follow Ms. Cutler. She's done a phenomenal job as our Registrar of Voters, but I think you will do just as stellar as a job. And I'm excited for the future to come with you in that, in this role. So thank you for your commitment to Washoe County, and thank you for your continued commitment to all the citizens here of the county. So.
Mr. Chair, I have an additional item to add for the record.
Sure.
On this item.
Please. So as the clerk handles this out, we do have, I do have public comments signed in at this time, so I'd like to call the public comment up, Ms. Kathy Brandhorse.
My name is Kathy Brandhorse, and I'm also the United States President. Retirement is a big issue right now. Many of us are still working, and I don't know why you're going to say that we need to retire from our jobs. The retirement should be because if, if we don't want to work, we have the right, you know, to stay at work if we want to or not, no matter how old we are, no matter how big we are, and no matter how much the job, you know, takes for us to stay in it. The retirement, I hope, is not going to affect any of the seniors because they would like to go back to work, and because of their age, they hope that it will be excluded, because they would like to go back to work and earn some more money, because the money that they have, retirement, is not much money to live on. And I just wanted to let you know, the county manager's recommendation, the point Assistant Voter Registrar, well, we don't want to be voted in. We hope the applications that we fill out are going to be suitable enough for us to stay in our jobs and to stay in what we need to do to help the community. And the retirement, I hope, is not the age because limit, because we need to tell you right now that we are all capable of staying in our jobs and staying alert and staying with everybody to help them. Because if you try to retire everybody that's at the senior center, they wouldn't like that at all because they need to, you know, stay in their jobs. So please don't say that we are retired. Also, the voters that you are trying to say is voting us in, well, I hope you don't exclude, you know, some of the seniors that are needed to, after using an application, filling out an application, we are not voted in. So I just wanted to mention, you know, they are very capable of working, is my statement. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Well, well, before we do that, you know what? I'd like to invite Ms. Spicula, would you please make a few comments?
This is the acceptance of the resignation due to retirement of Luanne Cutler, Registrar of Voters, effective January fifth, 2018, and to accept the county manager's recommendation and appoint Assistant Voter Registrar Deanna Spicula to the position of Registrar of Voters, effective November twenty-seventh, 2017.
All right. Mrs. Valetich.
Thank you.
Assistant County Manager.
For the record, Christine Valetich, Assistant County Manager. Under Nevada Revised Regulations 244.164, each county having a population of 100,000 or more, the board may appoint an individual to the position of Registrar of Voters to assume all of the powers and duties with respect to elections. The position of Registrar of Voters is very highly specialized and requires technical knowledge and previous election experience, ideally specific to Washoe County, its voting systems and processes. The county manager is recommending the direct appointment option for the following reasons, that being one of them. Ms. Cutler was appointed to the position of Registrar in 2013, based on her technical and hands-on experience to ensure continuity in the operating of the office and conduction of election processes with integrity, honesty, and openness. Luanne Cutler will be retiring January fifth, as county manager has also mentioned, after serving for 28 years with the county in that office. In her tenure, she's fulfilled this vision with many accomplishments, and she couldn't be here today, but obviously, we'll be honoring her at a later date in January. But the board is very familiar, I'm sure, with one of her biggest accomplishments, which occurred earlier this year, where she worked extensively with the 2017 Nevada Legislature with the goal of securing $1.7 million for the replacement of our voting equipment and systems. The board approved that purchase in August, and the total cost, $4.2 million system. Implementation is scheduled to begin early next month, and I know they're already doing preliminary work on that. In the interest of furthering continuity and stability in the operations of the office and in making the transition for staff and voters alike a seamless event, Luanne Cutler is recommending that the board appoint Deanna Spicula, the current Assistant Registrar of Voters, as her successor. Ms. Cutler has worked to ensure a succession plan for her position and is certain that Deanna is ready to fill the role of Registrar upon her retirement. Ms. Spicula is here today. She has the experience, education, knowledge, work ethic, and integrity required for the position. Having worked in the office of the Registrar of Voters since 2011, she has successfully learned nearly every aspect of voter registration and elections. Early on, she was tasked with leading the redistricting process, that's a process that occurs every 10 years. Deanna has also led the way to efficiencies and workflow improvements within the department on many projects, from address corrections to the new absentee voter equipment installation last year. She was responsible for most of the amendments and the financial impact statements that were submitted to the 2017 legislative session, and has assisted with budget review and has a good understanding of the department's financial status. Deanna is also known for providing exemplary customer service and for her communication It is for all of these reasons that the county manager is in agreement with Ms. Cutler and that we are recommending that the Board of County Commissioners appoint Deanna Spicula as the next Washoe County Registrar of Voters. What we're asking for is for that to be effective November 27th, so that we can do a six-week overfill of the position. The financial impact of that is $4,182, which the department's budget can absorb, so there, it should not be a huge impact to the budget.
Great. Thank you, Assistant County Manager. Any further discussion from the Commissioners? Mr. Chairman? Yes, Commissioner Hartung.
Ms. Spicula, I can think of no one who can readily step into the job with zero training, zero hours put forth, and do it as seamlessly as you can, and I'm thrilled that you've agreed to do it. You've, you've done a great job representing Washoe County during quite a number of elections. Your on-camera presence is flawless. Welcome. Welcome to the position.